No, ang tanang ipilinyos dun na ingon ana, na klase 'yung pagtuoon sa kaharmonyos ang ibuo. Lagamukitang incidentis 'yung kinabuhay, no? Muna ito'y tayo mga ipaila si Gino 'yang kagwalingon sa kuwan. Daghanatang mga kuwan, mga proof niya na. Dunay isa ka manalagat. Labutan siya ug bagyo to sa lawod. Ino siya, "Kung doon na may Diyos, luwas ako." Guba na 'yang sakilan. Ay, karitlang iag-kuwan siya dolphin, i-dala siya stoplin. Ino siya tulag 'yung Diyos. Adto na siya sa iyahang mga barkada, ng mga palahubog. Kesa'y musotin 'yung ding wala Diyos, kay Kulata ako naku. Grabe po, kabrota na po 'yang himo. So, di, God siya palabot nga na imingon nga wala Diyos, kay iag 'yung experience. So, kitado na 'yung ta experience, kesa ang Diyos sa kuwan kinabuhay. No? Dunay mga grabe kayo. No? Grabe kayo, ang uban, dili, kasurbi kay makahilak tungod sa grabe nga kuwan, na paglihok sig na siyang kinabi. That's why atong kuwan, i-testify'ta na sa mga tao, labina katulad dunay pag ados, po't ikaw may comforter nila. Tatuas siya, no? Dunay discouragement, atuas siya, inspirasyon tungod si Gino, kay na-experience nimo. So, kanang atong mga bad experiences, dili na sayang para napag-equip sa kuwan kay himo on'tang counselor and comforter sa mga tao. Muna'y principle sa iron sharpens iron. Kita naman God, may mag-encourage ka na isa, comfort ka na isa. Sige, kay wala may muhat nagku-kuwan, next na po Tigoro.
Let's pray. Thank you, O God, for the lesson we have learned today about faith in you. It is our prayer, Lord, that our faith, O God, will always be consistent. Dili lang Gino, kanagtawag nga whether, whether, but always Gino, even in the ups, downs, among kinabuhay, magmatinoohon kami kanibo. Og togo, King Lord, amo kinabuhay always na kaangklas imong ang pulong Gino. Tuloy kami, Lord, how to trust you, O God. Continue, Lord, to bless your people in these departments, amo mga imong mga anak roll, mga legislators, silang session karoon, magkapakaila wala ikaw, o kang imong kaalam nga lang ito, maggovern. Silang pangunahon na, and then, Lord God, igyanin mo sila sa pag- hatag og decisions, Lord, sa mga dapat nila Gino, hatag ng decisions, Lord, labina sa padahing apag-uswag sa municipality sa Ipin. I-bless ang tanan, Lord, ilang mga staff, mga visitors ka niya taroon, pag-address, Lord, sa mga problema Gino ang Diyos. Og palay kamagobles, Lord, sa Tibo, LGO family, ang imong ah kamot ni gamahanan, ma'o ang magka-cover, Lord, sa tanan ng kalautang. Ugosab ang imong blessings, Lord, padahing ipanagaya tanamong tanan. Is all we pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Mayang buntag sa tanan.
Okay, good morning. Our fifth regular session is served by call to order. Can we ask our secretary about the rule, please?
Hello. Okay, good morning to each and everyone, and welcome to the fifth regular session. Present for today's regular session is Madam Chair, the following: The Honorable Vice Mayor Anamel Oligario, Honorable Glenn Ian Sabihon, Honorable Sharit Mazin Hasim, we have Honorable Dayan Catalunya, Honorable Eric Alibutdan, Honorable Janel Bodner Andalaha, Honorable Elias Dangpalan, Honorable Joel Eball, Honorable Alberto Alcoriza Jr., Honorable Trixie Mill Palalon, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario, and we have Honorable Anapid Muhammad. On record, there are nine madam, we are in coram.
So, since we are in coram, let's go to the adoption of the Order of Business. Madam Secretary. Mr. Florin.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the Order of Business.
Yes, second. It's being seconded. Okay, let's proceed with our visitors. We have visitors here?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a few visitors for this morning's session. I'd like to first to move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors, Madam Chair.
Wait a second for the suspension. Suspension. It's being seconded.
Okay, Madam Chair, our first visitor that I'd like to accommodate in our session today, I think this case is more importante para nila. From Makilas, Ipin, we have Ma'am Genebel Kunahap. Actually, she's here to ask for our assistance because I think the family had an experience na morag na kinhanglan 'yung tabang sa local government yun ito Bill, Ipin. So, Ma'am Genebel?
Sa atong Halangdong Vice Mayor, good morning. Honorable Alberto Alcoriza, sir, good morning. Sa tanang konceho sa municipality of Ipin, mayung buntag sa tanan, visitors. Ako si Genebel Kunahap, ani ako karoon manghinaot nga aalang sa pagpresens sa amo ang sitwasyon, sa amo ang hinain sa kuwan pamilya, sa pagkahitabua sa kuwan amahan. O sa, si, ako ang amahan, si Wilfredo Kunahap, isa ka barangay tanod. Nahitabu ang incidente atong October 28, 2024. Siya nag, ah, please let me allow nga i-share na ko ang amo ang sitwasyon. Okay, nag duty siya atong October 28, 2024. Usaka barangay piyesta sa amo ang barangay. Nagpahigayon o disco, ako ang amahan, nag duty siya na ay nag-away dayon. Ang nahitabo isip siya ang nag duty, ni Badlong siya sa ga-away. Ang duha ka nag-away na siya'y ig-suon. So, ang katong ig-suon, ma'o ini- ni Kulata o ni sumbag sa akong amahan. Pero wala di sala ang akong amahan, kay igu lang man siya ni Badlong, o ang iyahang istorya ragyod san duha ka nag-away. Naiinun na siya ng undangan ang away para magpadayon ang kalingawan kay parihura man ming mga taga barangay Makilas. Og tuod, anang higayon na ako arad 'yung amahan ang naa, kay kami wala. Then, sa anang istorya ha, ang ni sentro ang ig-suon sa nag-away. Ako ang amahan ni lingkod na sa daplin, o giadto sa ig-suon sa isanga nag-away, gi sumbag ang akong amahan na bagok ang iyang ulo sa simento. Dayon gi tadyak-tadyakan, gi sipa-sipa ang akong amahan, ma'o hinungdan sa iyahang pagkakoma. Nahitabo na around 12:00 AM sa 29, October 29 na siya, 2024. Wala mi idea, un sa jod ang pagka-marag akong amahan, marsag hayop samtang gi kulata, samtang gi tadyak-tadyakan. Wala mi kaibalo nga ingon ana, DI, kalala. Kampantirapod mi, abinamog, say simple lang nga pagkasumbag. Pagka ugma, giadto namo ug tanan, kay mukuha mi o medikuligal. Kay nakaplano mi nga, mo file okay sa nahitabo. Dayon, u, igu lang jod nga nakakuha og medikuligal ang akong amahan, ga hagok na, gi pullout siya sa akong iyaan, kaya akong iyaan ang mikuyog niya paingon sa, sa tanan hospital. Sanito pa lang, samtang gabyahi sila koma na ang akong amahan. Gi dala nila paingon sa family hospital. Dili makaya pag-cater sa family hospital tungod sa critical jod ang, ang sitwasyon sa akong amahan. Gi refer mi sa West Metro, kay ang West Metro rapod ang maka, maka- accommodate sa sitwasyon sa akong amahan. Automatic pag-abot sa West Metro, gi goperahan ang iyahang ulo kay puno na jod sa dugo. After ana, naconscient ang akong amahan, pag human sa iyahang, sa operasyon, pilaka adlaw, nag-stay mi sa ICU. Kung wala ako nalimot, mga pulo ka adlaw. Dayon, nabalhin mi sa ward, kay ah, medyo na okay na ang akong amahan pero sakit, gi hapon ang iyahang ulo, o gi hapon ginainda niya. Then, five days lang mi sa ward, nibalik pagkakoma ang akong amahan. Gibalhinapod mi sa ICU. So, anang November 20, 2024, ah, nakabsan sa kinabuhay ang akong amahan. Mauni karoon nga, na ako kay dako kaayum mi og billing, og nagtubo siya taga bulan, og 5%. Paghawak namo sa hospital, ang amo ang remaining na balance na asa 1.74 million. Pero ang principal is 2.2 million kapin siya. So, karoon kay wala namang jod mi capacity, kay daku pod kaayum mi og cash nga utang sa amo ang silingan, og naprenda napod ang amo ang gamay ng luna, wala na jod mi kakwaan. Ang ako alang kay morag trauma, manggutput sa kuwan part kay ako'y ginatawagan sa secretary. Marabag ka ng, wala na ko'y kapadulngan, o tanan giadto na jod na ako, gi lihok na jod na ako, isip po sa ka-anak, o ako ramangun ang naa. Ako rey mapalihok, kay wala akong ig-suon diri. Mauna nga, morag, o kabalu ko nga, tang mayora ginaduol jod nila ko, kani anto, na vice, laghang kay salamat. Pero karoon, wala jod, wala jod na ang balance namo, gada ko, gada ko jod siya sa hospital. Mauna nga sakit pa sa amo ang part kay, bisan dawa, oo dawatun namo ang kamaturan nga, wala na akong amahan. Pero, umta, matabangan lang pod mi, aning billing namo nga. Ngahantod karoon, gada ko jod siya. Kay magtumo man siya 5% taga bulan, base sa amo ang remaining balance. Mauna nga, karoon, manghinaot ko nga, umta madungog ang amo ang hinain kay, kung sa amo apod nga part, gahuna una papod mi sa mga utang namo. Then, nahurot jod pod ang amo ang savings tanan, wala na jod mi. Then, wala jod pod namo, ni dahong mga mahitabu sa among amahan. Kay akong amahan, more than 10 years na na siyang ah gaservisyo, isip po sa ka barangay tanod, mauna nga, wala jod mi. Nagdahong nga, tungod lang atong hitabua, mawala ang amo ang amahan. Mauna nga, karoon, manghinaot ko kung asa pagjod mi makaduol, kay tanan gi duol namangun jod na ako.
Okay, thank you so much, madam. I'm, I'm requesting Honorable Ah-
Yes, Madam Chair.
-Alcoriza to pass a resolution requesting the hospital to stop sa itahang interest. And then, kadi po kumuwan nimo sa sambuang da.
Salamat, Kuyugan.
Madam Chair.
Honorable Eball.
Our visitor, Madam Chair, was not able to mention if the barangay has made action on it because this is a criminal case against those-
Yes, mayora nag-
Magsamat to sila, mga hubog to, who attended the, the disco activity.
Madam Chair, I think what happened to the father of our visitor is in line of duty.
That's why.
In line of duty, I think the barangay also needs to make necessary action. Bahalag, dili nila matubag tanan, pero dapat mutabang giton sila.
Unsa action gi himo sa kapitan?
Ang kapitan vice, gi kuyugan akong mama, motong nakakuha mi katong sa DILG, nasang pati katong sa BORIAN.
DSWD nakahatag magtulad?
Oo, mayora, 150,000 sa region. Pati nakaadto ko sa PCSO 50,000, ah 20,000 ilang nahatag. Ganak nga mga-
Isa pa'y lang, lahi na tanatay.
Wala na mayora. Then, nibalik man jod ko sa DSWD gahapon, ni duol ko ni Ma'am Jody Lynn, kaso dili na kumatagaan, kay tungod last year lang daw ni, then nakahatag napod ang DSWD.
Madam Chair, if I may? Was there any settlement made by both of the parties sa barangay? Eh, pareha ra gon nag ah bases, nga makaligis, og tao, unay arrangement, ano ba, mayran or whatsoever, for as long as magkasinab tanay? So, this involve big amount of money para ma-resolve ang ilahang problema? Was there any arrangement made between you sa barangay level?
November 20, at November 30, 2024, Honorable, nagpatawag ko sa barangay, ni kapitan, ang secretary, pati ang SK, o isa ka koncehal, kay kanin mangun nga disco, proposed by the SK siya, agreed by the body. So, sila akong gi patawag nga mga, ng mga people. So, ang istorya nila, mutabang sila taman sa ilahang makaya, o mangitapod sila gpa maagi. Pero sukad, ato nga man, hangtud karoon, gafalo up man ko, atong mga mi aging bulan, pero wala man, Honorable.
How about the offender? Ang offender ba, may manay nakahatag ugpo, in fact, imong papa namatay jod. So, it's a, a, a criminal case, Madam Chair. Og gawas kong na ay ah settlement kay nyung himo on before the barangay.
Ah, Honorable, ang sa, ang nakasala sa kong papa, gabadayon ang amang hiring karoon.
May kaso sila?
Oo, ang kaso ni attorney.
Kaso, nakapile mo kaso?
Opo, homicide ang na, na, na time. Oo. Noni nga, karoon, kanag, ako gapaning kamot jod ko sa kaso. Kay kami pod klase nga mga tao, dili mi gusto ugubot. Ma'gi mi proseso, dili mi mo balos, kundili ang amo alang- justice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, madam.
I think Madam Chair, ah, ang unsa gi kinhanglan karoon sa atong bisita is- unsa'y mga extra nga mga- oo, pwede na to mahimo. On the other matters, Madam Chair, I would like to propose to pass a resolution, requesting, kani amua, request na magyuta, sa West Metro Hospital nga unta, ah, ihunong sa nila ang pagpaningil o interest sa imong utang, while atong trabaho, unsa'y pwedeng mahimo ninyo sa pamilya, o unsa'y pwedeng mahimo sa LGO o sa barangay, no? Kay dili na po kay makatarunganon, CBO ra ang imong papa, namo'y utang sa hospital, sigehan magpatubo. So, ato lang sila, we will try to request the hospital through this resolution nga ihunong pod na. Dayon, ato na linin i-refer, si Senator Bongo, di ba nagahatag siyang mga assistance ka niya to?
Oo, las, nagtagal si mayora.
Anataga na sila.
50K. Pero ingon sa, gi tawagan ko po sa West Metro nga, wala daw to lang mo nadawat na expired daw, kay wala ako pa submit o requirements. Then, naglihok pod po, asa pumusubmit, pero willing ko.
Okay, istorya taw niya. Actually, siya magui, siya magui nagfirma. Kabalu ko ani, paggamatay sa papa, gi bilin pa ni siya, naggarantura siya.
Gi hold ko sa hospital. Wala ako naka-
Pwede na na doc?
Pwede ba yan? Madam Chair.
Gi pugos jod ko pa firma sa promisorino.
Ah, promisorino.
Oo, gi pugos on jod to niya.
Wala may napreso sa utang, Madam Chair. Correct, ay, hindi man nagadu ka, no? Promisorino, ni, ah, ni promise ka, namubayad ka, mora na, mona ang promisorino, pero eh, ni amang pindu, tiga ani mo guantao saan ang bulan, o kira na siya, at least na ay payment. Walay tao napreso sa utang. Correct.
Sa mga utang ta.
I-approve mga muwa.
Approve na to ni mga muwa sa bangkutan na.
Sige lang, kana siguro atong hangiun ang hospital.
Can we have recess? Can we have a recess?
Okay, our, thank you very much. Our next visitor is from barangay Tawi. I think her purpose is for clarification of expressing no objection of something, two families at puruk gumamila Tawi. Josefina Aplikador. I don't know. Sige, ma'am. Oh, please.
Ah, kani letter I. Can I have a letter I? Letter I, letter I sa agenda. Agenda, letter I. Na nakajenda din na siya.
Nakajenda dini.
Nakajenda na na siya sir.
Oh, sige.
We'll just refer this to the committee on land use.
Oo, i-refer na muni sa committee on land use. Ah, sige, sige. Okay, thank you, thank you. Nakajenda dyan. Okay. Next is Mr. Neil Franz Abante Amante. Abante. Maudiansya in the San Pugnayan Bayan Session for affiliation with LGU Ipil. What's this? ALS Life Support Services? Ah, sige. Nakajenda giyapon? Oh, okay. Huh? Ani hangyo do's siya ngamoy istorya. Okay, sige, sige. For three minutes. Perhaps for us to be enlightened, Madam Chair.
Letter C na sa'yo.
Okay, sige.
Check sa inung pan agenda, letter C.
Okay. So thank you sir. Good morning Vice, good morning everyone. So in the absence of our administrator, Sergeant Louis Chong Danda, so I am Neil Franz Esabante from ALS Life Support Services from Zambuanga City. So kami po is a private ambulance service, a DOLLE accredited first aid training provider, emergency medical services NC2 Training Center and EMS NC2 NC3 Assessment Center from Zambuanga City. So we were instructed by our administrator which is from kabasalan si Sir Danda to affiliate with the LGU Ipil para ang amo mga OJT po na mga EMTs or we call the medics mag-affiliate me with the local LGU para ma-broaden ang knowledge sila to emergency medical response and to know the protocol of the different units.
So actually nakajenda siya, then we'll just refer this to committee on rules but we have to review the your contract.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abante. Okay, our next visitor is we have ma'am Jesseline Torno and Mrs. Doke, our child development teachers under the office of the MSWDO in Ipil. Yes?
Good morning everyone, to our honorable Vice Mayor Anamed Oligario. Ugsa tanan namong anatong mga konsihal diri sa lungsod sa Ipil sa mga bisita. Anya kami karoon mga child development workers and teachers diri sa Ipil tungod kay naami seminar nga amunggi kuwan nga importante kaayon ni tungod sa umaabot namo nga assessment or evaluation. So dito ni mahitabu sa Zambuanga City, so karoon ng duol nalang karong August 7 and 8. Unya ang kasagara sa amua sa mga barangay, wala na'y travel, ang uban po, giatagan mi ukaning registration lang, wala mi pamasahe or accommodation. So naning kamot mitanan nga unta makaad to mi tungod kay importante kaayon ni alang sa amua, sa amuang accreditation kay apil manis sa LG, SGLG. Unya, nangayom mi kuwan o kunsa'y matabang sa amuang mga child development workers dinhi sa Ipil sa mga kuwan.
So good taghik abot mo Zambuanga. I can provide, maka provide siguro, you ask kuwan nalang. Try to kuwan sa kang mayor kung maka request mo sa bus.
Oo, ano na lang.
Ano lang siguro, kuda transport. Sa accommodation, pila mo din nakadays?
Two days, Vice. Kuwan manggod kay ang uban wala giyod, ang uban sa amua registration na pwede hatag. So kinahanglan judgpo namo asa po may mukuwan dito, ugsa bus, okay na sa, naay na mga registration, ang wala po.
Ah, a suggestion. Dili naman siguro kinahanglan mo ato tanan, pila lang kabok mo ato and then tapok na po, ang unsa'y na learn ninyo dito.
Cascade na lang.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
So importante siguro.
Asan ay ilahang kuwan, asan ay ilahang seminar?
Sa Zambuanga City, konsihal.
I heard the Honorable Congressman Bangkoro.
Naibalay, ng panan.
I do not know, confirm ba na sa Zambuanga? So so we can request
Okay na na siya.
General Honorable Congressman Bangkoro.
Oo, mag sulap.
So makikita mi kang kuwan. Dili, request na lang mo. Manila manas sila karoon. Kay session manay.
I would like to suggest, Madam Chair, that they will try to coordinate with the chief of staff of Congressman Bangkoro. I think, naman si office siguro dun. O nas Kapitolio.
Province. Yeah, then anamoy accommodation and then human ang transport ninyo i kuwan si mayor hangyo asa bus.
Ayun na'to ang bus.
Wala lang to, thank you, kaayos. Dili na may hatag alawan sa. Naning kamot na lang mi dito. Kay seminar man, di man shopping. So accommodation ninyo, kung makuwanan nyong accommodation, okay na mo. Then plus sa inyong ang bus pa, okay na na tanan.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next visitor is Mr. Patrick John Agumen of G4 Square Metro Ipil Chess Club. Yes, Mr. Agumen? You are recognized? Oh, sige, sige. Sige.
Good morning Vice, so sa mga SB sa Ipil. Bahini sa sports sa chess dayon, sa kuwan manggod sa budget wise nagorganize mi uga mga player ba dayon? Progressive manggod ang mga player dito? So mo'to nga, naka-initiate ni nga para maka-invite judg po mga player judg sa gawas. Mag-request mi uga sa maba, open chess tournament. Muna ang mga budget samari. Then total budget, budget is 26,500.
Wala ka na sayo? I think it's 27,500. 12, 15, 18, 19, 22, 27,500.
Hmm, sige na, alam mo.
26,500. 27,500.
So mo'to
Pero kera po ni 26,500.
Kay progressive namanggod ang mga player judg ba dayon? Marab, laghanagid na inggan niyo sa chess.
Suerte. Nakato nakakang mayor?
Karoon pagid ni napapali.
Ipresent po ni kang mayor.
Ah, i-present ni second.
Kay basina siya'y budget para sa mga inay ni, huh? Ah, sige.
And besides, the letter is addressed
Address to the mayor. Dili sa amua.
Madam Chair, mangutangan lang ta sa atong bisita, ngano, August manininyo, ngano wala ninyo negi-appel as one of the highlights sa celebration sa araw.
Na late, na late mo ng initiative good. Karoon lang ba na-realize it ba?
Because Madam Chair, I am particular on the budget, so dito unta sa araw na i-certain budget siguro nga ma-allocate para dia sa chess tournament.
Exactly.
Vice, try to present this to the mayor para basina siya'y kuwan sa sports, budget sa sports, huh? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much, Engineer Agumen. Our Okay, our, I think this is the last visitor that we have for today's session. Our friends from Tagum Cooperative Ipil. I think it's also in the agenda, but I think they will have to say something. Okay, Mr. Chong?
Mangutang ni dyan.
Mangutang ni.
Mangutang ni, kaya wala'y mapriso.
Adi na ni magpautang kay
Wala'y mapriso. Wala'y mapriso. Ningok si pan si Honorable, libutan, wala'y mapriso. Adili na mi kadawak, kay 65 naman ni.
Namats, Vice. So, good morning everyone, good morning Vice. Morning sir, good morning sa tanan SB members. Ako daisy sa mamamarketing for Tagum Cooperative. What I'm doing here lang karoon is I would like to, kana sa mga wala ng nakaila ni Tagum Cooperative, we are part of the memorandum of agreement kami, mua medali sa kuwan LGU Ipil last 2023 under kang Mayora. So karoon, we need madam may magremowa so nagpret, kuwan lang po ko, nagstorya lang po ko dito, part siya sa agenda. Makulang ipaibalonga, kana gapa kuwan mi, savings and credit mi nga cooperative. We start, nagstart siya sa Tagum City Garden, the Bowden Norte, so nagapahulam mi uga kwarta, 9% per annum diri sa atong LGU if makarimowata. So ang isa po sa mong kuwan, isasamo ang mga kana benefit, nakabenefitan na makakakuwan, magpa-loan mi is under gigan sa atong elected, atong mga co-terms, atong mga appointed and then ato tanan regulars na to diri sa LGU. 9% per annum maximum namo is 2 million pesos. The next is, since ma-member ni Tagum Cooperative, so not everyone is kanabagong, kana nakabalug insurance or under bitaw ng nagkuwag insurance. As member of Tagum Cooperative manggod, member palang daan, wala palang siya nagloan or wala pa siya other products na bisundan sa muna, member palang daan. Nana siya'y insurance, so our insurance is called mortuary and himsuk pamilya program. Among mortuaries, ever magani unsa'y mahitabuon ni member, insured siya for 100,000 and it could be cash or it could be, kana pwede niya buhaton nga ipabilya ba basinare mo, ang mga paided dery nga kuwan, nga kana, kung ninyaria. The next is himsuk pamilya program, katu, gamay ang hinabang napuna siya if in case mahospital po si member is naami reimbursement ginahatag sila which is 5,000 pesos pinakataas namo if kana makuan sila mahospital sila. And other things is, ako lang po nihi-highlight, si Tagum Cooperative is a 59 years old nga cooperative, which is a billionaire cooperative, large scale na siya. Since karoon manggod, medyo naamogoy kana bago sa gitagawa si BSP nga atong 20% ang ginapuwa bitaw Mayora for our mga long term. If kin sa tong mga mahilig nga time deposits, mga inana, we also have our time deposit which is, kana, the differ lang yud ang ihang, ihang kuwan yang interest rate kung pila tong ihi-hatag, ang ibili na to ng 10% pero, ang nakarinig d'to kay since cooperative siya, wala mi tax. So kung pila inyong gibutang kung unsa'y ang tubo mo, tumutubo balik sa inyo. Tapos ang highlight napuna mo dya is naami kuwan, wala mi pre-terminate nga mga fees. So if ever nagbutang muglat sa 700,000, tapos determine niyo one year, karoon, ika-ten month na tay kuwan emergency, we need to kana paon dito ng kwarta, wala siya'y termination fee. Pero galing lang, kung unsa kong rate naghihatag namo sa inyo ah, bubalik na siya sa base rate kung sa'mong base rate. So kanaan ang siya ang changes niya. So as to pre-termination fees, mga inana, kung pila inyong gibutang, maupun inyong makuha balik, plus ang tubo atong 10 months nga kung pila inyong hi-hatag. And lastly na lang po, ako lang po nihi-highlight, so since we are accredited nga kuwan, nga cooperative po, nagpahulam mi kwarta, ang nakarinig d'to lang yud po if sa amua mo manghulam or ang others kung po ganan sila magmanghulam sa amua, is namie ginatawag diri patronage refund since cooperative siya. So this patronage refund, ako lang hi-kuwan elaborate gamay, kuwan na siya, gikan na siya sa tanan interest ngayon 'yung ginabaryan, di ba namatay monthly amortization? So every interest atong ginabaryan maaccumulate na siya for the whole year and then from that whole year naana siya'y, kung pila inaaccumulate niya, naay certain percentage nga among yuli. So for example, ang accumulate is 50,000 pesos, this year ang among ihi-hatag na patronage refund is 13.81%. So 13.81% sa 50,000 nga interest nga nabaryan na to for the whole year is mauna among ginabalik. So ma-enjoy po na siya sa mga power words of effort. So mauna lang pa sa tanan Vice and everyone, good morning.
Okay, thank you kay sir, since nakajanda manis siya, we'll just refer this committee on rules and for review and evaluation for the new mua.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chong.
So pero time pa man ako'y question dyan, naay limit sa age sa magloan?
As to sa kuwan Mayora, sa among pali sigud kay kuwan giyod siya Mayora, kana, ang kanabagong minimum bitaw nga 60 bitaw namo pinakataas Mayora. Kaya Vice kay kuwan manggod na siya, kana bitong, mauna manggod ng time nga mag-retire judg si, let's say regular employee, mag-retire na judg si regular employee. So mura bag dipinsa lang po, pero pwede manggod siya applyan dito makastorya lang ka BM, if ever maganin muhatag si BM or maup, pangutangan namo si head niya. Si ma'am is under paani, pwede pa siya three years, talo siya na na, pwede siya mastroyahan pero nalang ma amend lang siya. Pero as to process yud, katu mura nag cap of niya to 60.
Okay, thank you. So pwede pa tayo, Honorable Dankalan, Honorable Oligario. Isa pa, isa pa 'ka 60 din ni.
Since Vice, atong magumangal loans diri tanan is insured judg siya. So regardless of the amount na agit siya insurance yud, so basin, regardless of the age, ugs ma-approve siya. O, then kuwan po siya kana naka-insured judg siya. And lastly dyan, Mayora, wala na ko nasuklang yud nakalimtan, if ever kin sa toy ganahan mo akwar, maybe naay ganahan mo akwar uga uga car na po mi hi-hatag po mi car loan diri, 7.5 per annum lapun ni. And isan na highlight is namie patronage refund. So dili ta, gabayad lang tanan sa paginterest na pwede mabalik sa tuwa.
Okay, abi na po manghatag mo car, na de car loan. Sige sir, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chong. So I think Madam Chair, we're through with the visitors' hour.
So let's proceed with the privilege hour. Anyone? Honorable, alibutan? Wala, wala tanan? Yeah, nabot ng snack, so wala may mag-privilege, I think we recess for snacks.
We say sata. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, reading an approval of the minutes in a second for the approval of the minutes of the previous minutes. If there is any correction, just approach our secretary for the correction.
Yes, Madam Chair, there is a correction in item 4 to 4 to 6 to 4 to 8 of the committee report number 034, subject application for business permit to operate the Prosperity Gaming Corporation. Madam Chair, there was an error in the posting of the name of the representative of Prosperity Gaming Corporation during the preparation of the report. In my report at that time, Madam Chair, it was reported as a certain Mr. Heraldo if Del Rosario as the owner of Prosperity Gaming Corporation. However, upon checking, it was proven that it was not Mr. Del Rosario, but a certain Mr... Ani, ready. A certain Mr. Ray Noel Amante. I so moved Madam Chair for the correction of this particular item.
In a second, it's being seconded. Reference of business.
Hello.
Reference Madam Secretary.
Okay, for the reference of business. Under proposed ordinance, we have draft ordinance number 004 sponsored by Honorable Glenn Ayansabihon, an ordinance declaring one-way traffic scheme along Magcaysay Street from Mayor Hinoroso Sukgang Avenue to G. Ferrari Street being implemented during the period of August 5 to January 4, 2026 only on weekdays and shifts during the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 8 a.m. and 3 p.m. to 5 p.m.
Refer to the committee rules.
Item, under other ordinances from Barangay for review, we have resolution number 132025 of Barangay Tawa expressing objection to the order given to the 11 families of Purukuma Melatawa as requirement to the DNR.
Committee on Land Use.
Under proposed resolutions, we have resolution number 08 sponsored by Honorable Elias Dangpalan, resolution adopting the Republic Act 11229 otherwise known as the Child Safety in Motor Vehicle Act and ensuring its implementation within the jurisdiction of the municipal IPIL.
Committee on Women and Children. Madam Kalon.
Hello. A resolution, number 8, a resolution adopting Republic Act number 11229 otherwise known as the Child Safety in Motor Vehicles Act and ensuring its implementation within jurisdiction of municipality of Ipil, Sabwak, Asibugay. Whereas Republic Act number 11229 otherwise known as the Child Safety in Motor Vehicles Act was signed into law on February 20 to 2018 mandating the use of child restraint system in private motor vehicles to ensure the safety of child while traveling. Whereas the law requires that children age 12 years old and below with a height below 150 cm or 411 shall be properly secured in a child restraint system that is appropriate to child's age, height and weight. Whereas the Department of Transportation and the Land Transportation Office are tasked to enforce the provision of the act in local government units. Schools and organizations are encouraged to adopt measures to promote awareness and compliance. Whereas it is the policy of the state to protect the lives of children and promote their welfare by adopting measures to prevent road crashes and ensure safe speed travel. Now therefore, now therefore, in my book and my resolution will be adapt to our, it will be adapt to this municipality to formally adopt the provision of Republic Act number 11229, Child Safety in Motor Vehicles Act in support of strict implementation within jurisdiction of local government unit of Ipil, jurisdiction local government of Ipil that in for result further that information campaigns, orientation and coordination with concern agencies be conducted to ensure awareness and compliance with the law. That copies of this resolution be furnished to the Department of Transportation, Land Transportation Office and other concerned agencies for their information and guidance. I so...
In a second.
I second, Madam Chair.
It's been seconded. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable Ebel.
Practically this ordinance, Madam Chair, directs the attention to our minors. Minors.
Minors.
Me I know if ever there is violation, what will happen now to our motor riders, minor motor riders?
Of course, um...
Otsai buhaton ato nila.
Who minors ang nagdrive.
Yes, particularly.
Okay, so there's also that minors are not allowed to drive any vehicles, motorized or any motor vehicle. Four-wheel, single, it's not allowed, especially those minors.
That's why, uh, it's very, it's very even na kita, na magkita even sa ato mga barangays, daghang mga minors nga sugemupadagan o mga motorcycle. If there will be, they will be caught driving, especially kato mga maaksidente pa dyan, what will happen to our motor riders, minor motor riders?
Madam Chair, and of course, I pray kung may rumagyari sa kanila, that's their own risk maybe because according to law, they're not allowed to drive.
I think you have to refer it to the Committee on Transportation and be guided with the mittsum and the fun para makita talaga i-discuss niyo yan eh. Kung ano 'yung mga next action pag ang minor ang nagatride.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable Kalonia.
Yes, for the question, I think the Honorable Dangpalan is just asking for a resolution adapting the Republic Act. This is already a drafted, uh, not drafted. It's already an approved Republic Act from the Senate. We are just adapting for compliance in our municipality, Madam Chair.
Yes, I know, but there's a question during the discussion period. So, akoan lang si Siguro sa Honorable Ebel para Siguro we will adapt that, no? But sa ato apod Siguro ng level, naatay ato ang idugang for sa mga minor.
Correct, Madam Chair. This is a national law and we are trying to adapt this in the municipality of Ipil. However, o gatuning adapt, it would be now under the, the, what is this? The lookout of the municipality of Ipil. Now, my question there is, what will happen to our kanang madakpanato ng mga minor nga motor vehicle drivers, labinag yun tong maaksidente ba, labinag yun? Otsai mahitabot nila. I believe, Madam Chair, there is something, kwan o, otsabat, it will be under the care of the MSWD or whatsoever?
Honorable Dangpalan?
Anyway, if you read the whole, the whole...
Republic Act.
Republic Act 11229, it's already stated, Madam Chair, I, yes, Madam Chair. The does and don'ts of this Republic Act already in this, uh... Resolution.
Can you read up that part?
Okay. If we read all this, uh, Republic Act 9229, if you allow me to read all.
Proportion lang sa katoto.
Proportion. Recuse our one-minute break resist.
Carelessess. Ato lang.
To answer the question of, uh...
Honorable Ebel.
If we read the child safety in public utility vehicles, they already study and recommend to the Congress the use of child restraint system in public utility vehicle such as gift merchandise including school buses, taxis bus and other transportation. And we will go to the penalties of this, uh... To determine after the study, child restraint system are not applicable to certain public utility vehicles, it shall be recommended, okay? Uh, and then in section 10 of this Republic Act 11229, any driver in violation of section 4 and 5 of this act shall be fined, 1,000 for the first offense, 2,000 for the second offense, 5,000 pesos for the, in suspension of the driver's license for a period of one year full. But if we, oh, if this minor will drive at this path, dahil hindi pa naman natin ano eh, hindi pa naman pwede mag-drive talaga ang minors dito. It's always accompanied by a drive, a licensed drive, a licensed driver, Madam Chair. And also, I would like also to amend this, we will also amend this fine because we are here in our court in Ipil, we are only allowed to file one, the highest is 1,000, not 5,000, at in this, uh, the penalties of this 299. at in this, uh, the penalties of this two nine nine, eleven two nine nine, Madam Chair.
It's a public act, you cannot amend a public act.
But here in our, here in our, pwede ba yun, no?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Correction, Madam Chair.
Honorable Alibutan.
Uh, kato yang ingon nga, we are only allowed to penalty of five of one thousand. It is only applicable to the barangay, not to the municipality. Ang municipality more than one thousand ang pwede niya ma-fine. Ang barangay, one thousand and below, una correction, Madam Chair, keningon mangujang nga, one thousand ang daang pwian kuwan. Yang i-amend kay, dito pwede kay, up to one thousand pesos na ang atong pwede fine. That is applicable sa barangay, not sa one thousand.
The question is, can you amend a public act? You cannot amend a Republic Act.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Because.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, practically, if we will, uh, adapt the entirety of this Republic Act, it's not everything that is applicable to Ipil. That is why we will not adapt it, yeah, the correct term is, we will not adapt everything or in total. Yes, we will only adapt the principle, but when it comes to penalty provisions, we need to, uh, take consider that LGUs are only allowed up to a maximum of two thousand five hundred pesos penalty.
Yes.
So that is why we have to formulate our own local ordinance, but we adapt the principles of the, uh, the, uh, the Republic Act.
Okay, can we have recess? Yeah, Madam Chair.
Nine, an act providing the special protection of child passengers in motor vehicles appropriating funds. Therefore, hindi na nakasali dito kung saan mag-drive, kung paano mag-drive. Only the purpose of this act is the safety of the child passengers.
As passengers, yes.
Only, eh, very specific, that due to plaza title, that an act providing for the special protection of child passengers in motor vehicle and appropriating funds thereof. So, you told, it'll have po ang ating pagdikasan dito.
Okay, any more discussion?
Madam Chair, uh, as part of still the continuation of our discussion, I would like to suggest that we will just approve this. Uh, considering that this is for the safety of the children while they are riding, uh, it does not stipulate, it's not stipulated there when a child is the one driving. We can have a separate local ordinance for that. So, I would like to suggest that we will approve this, uh, and I would like to request that later on, we also have to formulate a local ordinance uh, that will protect our children, labi na sa ilang responsibilidad kung mga ginikanan, magpa-drive sa ilang mga anak.
Okay, any more discussion, objection, they're having none, yes?
Uh... Suggestion lang, sa sunod ka na, mga yun na tao ko, piyadot sa mga yun na, di ba? Kay, we will, uh, approve tanong, wala na kabalutin sa atong i-approve.
Mauman.
Wala na kabalutin sa ulo, tanong ng Republic Act.
Correct, correct.
Di ba? Dapat sa sunod, tagaan, tagaan ang kopiya, tanong ang binuro, parates, makabalutan, atong makita, otsai atong i-approve.
Madam Chair, since we are already paperless, we can have these Republic Acts to be submitted for a resolution for adoption or approval uh, through the, um, through our platform, online platform. So I suggest maybe for our technical team to do the same, and for each of the SB members to, uh, prior to the, maybe the day before the session, to review the, um, the, uh, downloaded, uh... Downloaded resolutions for considerations and other mga, uh, uh, papers to be reviewed online.
Yeah, okay, thank you, and make it sure also, ang opponent, Annie, make it sure during caucus time, you will be present. We can discuss it, thank you. Any more objection, they're having none, motion is heard by approve.
Okay.
Okay, next item. Uh, under other communications, we have here the annual budget for CY twenty twenty five, barangay Lower Ipil Heights, uh, the third suburb, first suburb.
Oh. We are not yet through with the resolutions, uh, Madam Secretary. We still have one.
Okay, so, sorry. We have draft resolution number zero nine, sponsored by Honorable Alcoriza Junior. Uh, resolution authorizing the conduct of the legislative agenda formulation workshop for the Sanggunean for the term twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight.
Honorable Alcoriza.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, we all believe that the conduct of this legislative agenda is very important for the Sanggunean Bayan of Ipil, especially that we are at the start of this term, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. This is very meritorious, this is very urgent, and, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to pass a resolution, uh, authorizing the conduct of the Legislative Agenda, or LA, formulation workshop for the Sanggunean Bayan for the term twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight. And our venue is based on our initial agreement, Babami Beach Resort, Labason, San Buanga del Norte, and, uh, the date will be on August twenty first to August twenty second, twenty twenty five, Madam Chair. August twenty to twenty two, yes.
Workshop and team building.
Workshop and team building.
Yeah.
Three days?
Uh, ikatulungoy pag uli.
Oh.
Pwede magpabili na uban, okay. Any second?
Second.
Babami. Being seconded by Honorable, uh, Alibutan. Okay, any discussion, objection?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I think some of our colleagues here were not, uh, present during the, this, the initial discussion. Uh, for the sake of the, uh, members who were not around during our discussion, we decided to hold this, uh, Legislative Agenda at Babami Beach Resort in Labason, San Buanga del Norte, considering that if we will held this in that area, we can save a lot. Gamayera tagasto, and then we can bring in our staff, everybody can go with us.
And?
And, uh, of course, uh...
Dahla ang inyong mga bana, ognamo 'yung mga bana, dahla ang mga sawa.
But of course, uh, Babami Beach Resort, we can, we can, uh, have it as an exclusive, uh, activity for all of us. And I would like to request our dear Honorable Vice Mayor, uh, Inday Ami Oligario, to personally check the area.
With the secretary. With the secretary.
Oh, together with the secretary.
Yeah, among atong karong hapon.
Ah, thank you. So, kuwan manggud, magluto, luto lang dota dito, and we can have it very simple, pero ang atong discussions, ang atong sessions, uh, dapat kuwan yun, kanang rigid and, uh, completeos ricados.
Very good.
So, mas maipot siguro naapot at nan, okay, this is a team building and...
Yeah. We really request everybody to be, to be there on August twenty to twenty two.
Naipenalty ang dikado? Okay, any more objection, they're having none, motion is heard by approve. Other communication, Madam Secretary?
Okay, under other communications, we have here the annual budget for CY twenty twenty five, barangay Lower Ipil Heights.
Committee on Appopition.
Item D, we have here the MOA for Tagum Koop, Medina College, San Buanga City Medical Center, and item C, the contract for application between LGU and ALS Life Support Service.
Committee on Rules. But first, the Tagum review the and evaluate the new MOA.
Yes.
Okay, item D, communication from the mayor requesting for a resolution granting authority to the municipal mayor to sign a deed of, deed of sale for the following real properties of LGU Ipil Heights subdivision, LGU Raid subdivision, Lower Tawai subdivision, and IBT Commerce and Alucidential, Committee on Land Use. Item E, duly endorsed again from the mayor, the request of the Municipal Planning and Development Officer for the change of position title from Project Development Officer Two to Planning Officer Two, both have been the salary grade of fifteen.
Committee on Human Resource.
Item F, letter from the Provincial Governor Anke Hofer informing that the Provincial Government, in cooperation with the Chuchu Foundation Incorporated, will be holding a medical and dental mission at the Provincial Capitol on August fourteen to sixteen to help maximize the services available. The Provincial Government respectfully seek assistance in identifying possible patients from your municipality who need surgical treatment for conditions stated.
Coming up, this is for information, but we can also refer this Committee on Health para ma-kuandok, uh, Honorable Katalonia, mga patients na to makahimukag this, na handa, ano?
Uh, Madam Chair, um, we have a previous list, um, of patients uh, that was supposed to be for the World Surgical Foundation, we can refer those patients to Chuchu.
Thank you. Thank you. Committee report. Committee report.
Committee report.
Yes, committee report to the annual.
How about this, uh, barangay resolution? Ah, land use na, okay, okay. Thank you. Committee report. Unahon ato, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to request Honorable Alibutan to do the honors first.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I have three committee meeting reports on the Committee on Housing and Land Use. I think naaikopya ang ato ang Presiding Officer and ato ang SB Secretary. So the meetings were all conducted yesterday, July twenty, July twenty nine, twenty twenty five, at the SB Session Hall of which the respective time will be indicated in the specific committee report. First, Committee Meeting Report number zero four three with the subject, deliberation on the referred resolution of Honorable Al-Hafid E. Muhammad, SB member, ex-officio, indigenous people mandatory representative, or IPMR, with the subject, a resolution requesting the local chief executive of the municipality of Ipil, San Buanga Cebugay Honorable Ramses Toide Oligario, to donate a lot with an area of six hundred square meter located at the Ipil multi-purpose government center area at barangay Tawai, Ipil, San Buanga Cebugay, for the establishment and construction of Indigenous Peoples Hall. As a result of the discussion, discussions deliberated, there's, there are, these are the same, there, these are the recommendations. A, the committee endorses the intent of the resolution, but recommends its amendment to reflect on the inclusion of the proposed construction of a cultural center in addition to the IP Hall, and to omit the specific reference of the, of the request. and to omit the specific reference of the requested 600 square meter lot size subject instead to the actual lot requirement as determined by the program of works. B, the committee recommends that the IPMR coordinate with the municipal engineering office for the preparation of program of works which shall specify the actual lot size based on the allocated and approved budget amounting to 1 million pesos. Ako duni, kay naabuso sila 1 million pesos, Madam Chair. The prepared program of works shall then serve as the basis for the MPDC to confirm the availability and suitability of the proposed site thereby validating the appropriate lot size and identifying the most feasible location within the within the Ipil multipurpose government center. C, the committee recommends that the Sanggunean Bayan authorizes the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the IPMR for the use of a portion of municipal government property located at Ipil multipurpose government center, Barangay Tawai, Ipil, Sangbuanga Cibugay, subject to final site identification and technical validation for the purpose of establishing an IP Hall and Cultural Center. Therefore, Madam Chair, I move to adapt and approve the content of this report.
Any second?
Second.
Second seconded. Discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved.
Another motion, Madam Chair, I move that the Sanggunean Bayan authorizes the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the IPMR for the use of a portion of municipal government property located at Ipil multipurpose government center, Barangay Tawai, Ipil, Sangbuanga Cibugay, subject to final site identification and technical validation for purposes of establishing an IP Hall and Cultural Center.
Any second? Next seconded. Discussion? Objection? Having none. Motion is heard by approved.
Next, ah, committee report number forty-four. Ah, with subject deliberation on the endorsement of the municipal mayor regarding the letter request from Ipil Tiaybato District for the use of 100 square meter parcel of land located at Ipil Heights, pointing the globe tower at capital site for the proposal, for the proposed establishment of 200 cubic meter water reservoir. The following recommendations. A, the committee endorses, endorses the request of the Ipil Tiaybato District and recommends the execution of power between the municipality of Ipil and Ipil Tiaybato District granting them the right to use of rock, not a donation, Madam Chair, use of rock over the identified 100 square meter parcel of land located at, located at Ipil Heights. Second, the committee further recommends that the technical survey of the site validation be conducted by the MPDC and the municipal engineering office to confirm the suitability and availability of the proposed location and that the Sanggunean Bayan authorizes the local chief executive to enter into MOA in behalf of the LGU. So, an into the, an into this, Madam Chair, I move to adapt and approve the content of this report.
Second. Seconded. Discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved.
Another motion, Madam Chair, I move that the Sanggunean Bayan authorizes the local chief executive to enter into a MOA with the Ipil Tiaybato District granting them the right to use the property under a use of rock arrangement over the, over the identified 100 square meter parcel of land located at the barangay Ipil Heights for the purpose of establishment of a 200 cubic meter water reservoir.
Second.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved.
And lastly, Madam Chair, committee reports, committee report number zero four five. A deliberation on the referral regarding the concern of Miss Evangeline Aragona. On the registry of deeds, the recommends for the change of lot number stated in the notarized deed of sale and approved resolution related to the parcel of land she purchased from the municipality of Ipil. After deliberation, the committee recommends that Miss Evangeline Aragona coordinate with the registry of deeds specifically with the land examiner to obtain a formal written explanation or official request, ah, identifying the reason for the recommend, recommended lot number correction as, as the committee deems it premature to amend the SB resolution and the deed of sale in the absence of such official communication. With that, Madam Chair, I move to adapt and approve the content of this report.
Any second?
I second, Madam Chair.
Seconded. Discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
Next, Honorable, ah, Governor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, ah, committee report number zero three five, Committee on Science, Information, Communication and Technology. A subject letter request of PTB 11, Sangbuanga Cibugay, requesting for approval of its relocation at vacant, at the vacant lot previously occupied by Smart Communications, ah, located in Barangay Ipil Heights, Ipil, Sangbuanga Cibugay. Our remarks and recommendations, the committee, after thorough review and consideration of the letter request submitted by PTB 11, hereby recommends the denial of the said request. Um, this recommendation is based on the fact that there is an existing lease who le, whose lease has already been approved and extended under resolution number zero eight dash five nine nine dash 2024. The contract associated with this lease is set to expire on January 2035, which preceded the submitted request by PTB 11. Um, the committee believes that honoring the current lease agreement is essential to maintaining contractual integrity and ensuring fair usage of the property. Therefore, the committee recommends, ah, that PTB 11's request should not be granted at this time. Um, ah, Madam Chair, I, um, move for the adoption of this committee report number zero three five.
Any second?
Thank you.
Discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved. Any more committee report?
I have committee report, Madam Chair. Ah, committee referral, a letter from the municipal mayor requesting an ordinance establishing an integrated system to prevent mendicancy in the municipality of Ipil, creating the anti-mendicancy board and providing penalties thereof. Committee findings and recommendation, the committee finds that the above referral is consistent, consistent with the prevailing laws. Since the communication is requesting for sponsorship, the committee recommends that these ordinance be open for sponsorship from anybody from this August body. Um, I hereby, ah, recommend for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Another committee report on the committee of environment, a joint committee referral to the committee of environment and infrastructure. In connection with the letter dated July 3, 2025, expressing the intent of JE Hydro and Bioenergy Corporation to develop and operate a level three water distribution system in the municipality of Ipil and the request for a resolution of no objection from this honorable counsel was duly referred to these committees for appropriate evaluation. The committee findings are, after conducting an initial committee meeting and discussion with the representative of JE Hydro, we wish to convey the following. The committee observed that the project framework and proposal remain incomplete and are still in the drafting stage. Several major aspects of the proposed level three water supply program, including but not limited to technical design, financial viability, service coverage, regulatory compliance, and operational safeguards were not clearly presented during the initial discussion. A number of questions and clarifications raised by the committee remained unanswered as there was no sufficient supporting documents or detailed plan to substantiate the project's feasibility and benefit to the municipality. And given the scale and potential impact of the proposed project on the municipality's water supply system and its residents, the committees deemed it necessary to obtain a full and comprehensive presentation of the project framework and proposal prior to the issuance of a resolution of no objection. Ah, the committee then recommends that in view of the foregoing, the committee respectfully recommends that JE Hydro and Bioenergy Corporation be invited to appear before the Honorable Sanggunean Bayan to present in detail its complete project framework and proposal, including all technical, financial, legal, and operational components. This presentation will allow the August body to make an informed decision that is in the best interest of the municipality and its constituent. The honorable counsel fully recognizes the importance of reliable and sustainable water supply services for a growing community. However, the issuance of a resolution of no objection must be based on complete and verified information to ensure accountability, transparency, and protection of public welfare. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
I second, Madam Chair.
And last committee report, Madam Chair, on committee on health and sanitation. The committee on health and sanitation to which was referred a resu, resolution number twenty twenty-five zero six zero four seven of Barangay Tiayon, a resolution endorsing to the barangay at to the Sanggunean Bayan of Ipil, Sangbuanga Cibugay through the committee on health, Honorable Leon Catalunya, a complaint filed by Osiboy Pipa of Poruk Imabemco, Tiayon, against Rubigen Cinco. The committee finds that the complaint was first raised in the barangay level and the barangay chairman concerned has already conducted investigation about it. That despite due diligence of the respondent due to financial, financial constraint was not able to fully comply with the agreement last May 2024. Respondent has violated section seventy-seven of the code of the municipality, the sanitation code of the municipality of Ipil. After thorough discussion, both parties have agreed to the following compromise. A maximum of ninety days will be given to the respondent to comply with the sanitation code of Ipil. During the ninety-day holding period, the area where hogs, swine, or pigs are kept should be clean and odorless. Failure to comply with the above mentioned agreement shall be considered a violation of section seventy-seven of the sanitation code and will be subjected to appropriate penalties as provided for in the code. It is then recommended that respondent Rubigen Cinco adhere to the above agreement. The sanitation task force shall monitor compliance of the agreement and failure to comply with the above mentioned agreement shall be considered a violation of section eighty-eight of the sanitation code and will be subjected to appropriate penalties as provided for in that code. Copies of this committee report will be given to the complainant, respondent, sanitary inspectors, and office of the Punong barangay of the, of barangay Tiayon for their reference. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Second.
And, ah, committee report, um, subject annual budget on committee on appropriation, subject annual budget calendar year 2025 of barangay Don Andres, amounting to 10,968,319 and 54 cents. Barangay Labi, 2,781 and 41 pesos. And supplemental budget number one, calendar year 2025 of barangay Maasin, amounting to 39,880. The committee on appropriation to which was referred the annual budget ah, of barangay Don Andres and Labi and supplemental budget of barangay Maasin for review, evaluation, and approval. The said annual budget and supplemental budget has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under section fifty-nine of RA 7160 and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must assert an adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated and section three oh five of this code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines or procedures in budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting, Accounting, and Auditing Rules and Regulation. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Any second?
I second, Madam Chair.
Commit, ah, se, same committee, um, report for the committee on appropriation. Um, subject SK annual budget 2025 of barangay Maasin, amounting to 326,138 and 60 cents. Barangay Dumandan, 262,262 and 90 cents. Barangay Lower Tawai, 526,299 and 80 cents. Barangay Timalang, 500,301. And SK supplemental budget number one, calendar year of 2025 barangay veterans, amounting to 167,777 and 41 cents. The committee on appropriation to which was referred, ah, the SK annual budget um, of barangay Maasin, Dumandan, Lower Tawai, and Timalang, and SK supplemental budget number one. Barangay, of barangay veterans of this municipality for review, evaluation, and approval. The said SK annual budgets and SK supplemental budget number one has been referred to the local finance committee to the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under section fifty-nine of RA 7160 and subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must assert an adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section three oh five of this code. It is understood that the review actions does not authorize any items of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines, procedures, and budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting, Accounting, and Auditing Rules and Regulation. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Seconded.
I move for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety a supplemental budget, ah, eh, eh, the SK annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Maasin, amounting to 326,138 and 60 cents. Barangay Dumandan, 262 and 260, 262,262 and 90 cents. Barangay Lower Tawai, 526,299 and 80 cents. Barangay Timalang, 500,301. And SK supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2025 of barangay Veterans Village, amounting to 167,600, 777,41 cents. Annual budget of barangay Don Andres, amounting to 10,968,319 and 54 cents. Barangay Labi, 200, ah, 2 million, sorry, 2,781,041. And supplemental budget number one of barangay Maasin, amounting to 39,880, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
I second, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Objection? They're having none. Motion is heard by approved. Last, last?
That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Ah, committee reports. I have six committee reports from the committee on rules and, ah, ordinances and resolutions. Committee report number zero three seven, Madam Chair. Ah, subject an ordinance adapting the municipal ordinance number zero three dash three oh five dash two thousand twelve, the rabies control ordinance of local government unit to Ipil. Remarks and recommendations, the committee on rules, resolutions, and ordinances to which the matter was referred, an ordinance adapting the municipal ordinance number zero three dash three oh five ah, dash two thousand twelve of barangay, ah, barangay Suklema, the rabies control ordinance of LGU Ipil. Ah, committee meeting was conducted reviewing the said barangay ordinance, making sure that every provision in the adoption of such municipal ordinance is within the bounds of the law and can promote moral values to the constituents. After a thorough review, the- After a thorough review, the committee recommends that in section seven, in the penalty provision, Madam Chair, uh, the third offense, which has a corresponding penalty amounting to one thousand five hundred pesos, shall be lowered to what is the maximum allowable amount of just one thousand pesos, as stipulated in section three-nine-one A fourteen of the Local Government Code of the of the Philippines in nineteen ninety-one, prescribing fines in amounts not exceeding one thousand pesos for violation of any barangay ordinance. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances of the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel therefore recommends that this ordinance of barangay Suklema, adapting the so-called rabies control ordinance of the municipality of Epeel, be remanded back to the requesting barangay and make some necessary, uh, adjustments, especially on that particular item in section seven, and for proper action and compliance. Therefore, motion for the adoption of this report, Madam Chair.
Second.
Another committee report, another committee report, uh, committee, committee report number zero-three-eight, again from the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances. Our subject matter here is the proposed memorandum of agreement between LGU Epeel and Rural Bank of Epeel of Rizal Incorporated for a salary loan facility of LGU Epeel, regular employees, and same salary loan facility for elected and selected local officials. Madam Chair, for the information of this August body, we have two proposed memorandum of agreements because, uh, the, the requesting party, uh, has submitted two proposed MOAs. So ilang kidebide, no? For regular employees, a separate MOA, and for the, uh, elected officials, a separate MOA. Remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, these two proposed memorandums of agreement or MOA between the local government unit of Epeel and the Rural Bank of Rizal Incorporated for a salary loan facility to LGU regular employees and the same loan facility for elected and selected officials. Of course, upon receipt of these endorsements from the Office of the Local Chief Executive, the committee immediately conducted a committee hearing last Ju- July twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five at the Sangguniang Bayan and discussed the content of the two proposed MOAs, dealing with possible legal implications if there are any, the duties and responsibilities of the concerned parties, and most of all, the benefits that the regular employees of LGU of Epeel, as well as the elected and selected officials may get from these endorsements. After a thorough review of the content of the two memorandums of agreement, the committee finds the proposals in general as in order, meritorious and beneficial to the regular employees of Epeel, as well as the elected and selected officials of this municipality in times of financial woes. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances therefore recommends that these two proposed MOA will be approved, uh, giving the authority to the Local Chief Executive, uh, to sign the MOA for and in behalf of LGU Epeel. Motion for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Second. Seconded.
And, uh, motion, uh, for the approval of the content of the said two memorandum of of agreements, uh, Madam Chair. Finally, uh, a motion giving the, uh, uh, Local Chief Executive, Honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, the authority to sign the said, uh, two memorandums of agreement with, uh, the Rural Bank of Rizal Incorporated, Madam Chair.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you. And, uh, another committee report, Madam Chair, Committee Report number zero-three-nine, again from the Committee on Rules and Resolutions and, uh, Ordinances. This is again, uh, on the proposed memorandum of agreement between LGU Epeel and Ateneo de Sambuanga University School of Medicine. Remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the proposed memorandum of agreement between the local government unit of Epeel and Ateneo de Sambuanga School of Medicine. Upon receipt of the endorsement, of course, uh, from the Office of the Local Chief Executive, the committee then conducted a committee hearing last Jan- July twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-twenty-five at this office, and discussed the content of the said proposed MOA, dealing with possible legal implications if there is any, the duties and responsibilities of the concerned parties, and most of all, the benefits that LGU Epeel can get if it will enter into an agreement with the said school of medicine of Ateneo de Sambuanga University. After a thorough review of the content of the memorandum of agreement, the committee finds the proposal in general as in order, meritorious, and beneficial to the community of Epeel, as the deployment of medical students from Ateneo University can be seen as multipliers to the LGU health force in the barangays where the medical students will be stationed. The Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances therefore recommends that this proposed MOA will be approved, giving the chief, the local chief executive the full authority to sign the MOA for and in behalf of LGU Epeel. Motion for the adoption of this report, Madam Chair. Member.
Member.
Another motion, Madam Chair, for the approval of the content of, uh, the, uh, said MOA, Madam Chair. Finally, motion, Madam Chair, uh, giving the Local Chief Executive the authority to enter into memorandum of agreement, uh, with, uh, the Ateneo de Sambuanga University Medical School. Thank you. Next, Madam Chair, is committee report number zero-four-zero, again from the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances. Our subject matter here is an ordinance extending the services of the Municipal Social Services Welfare and Development Office, MSWDO, during Saturdays and Sundays, and providing overtime compensation or compensatory time off for personnel rendering weekend services. Remarks and recommendations, Madam Chair, the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred for review and approval of this draft ordinance number zero-zero-two series of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance extending the services of the Municipal Social Welfare and Development Office, MSWDO, during Saturdays and Sundays, and providing overtime compensation or compensatory time off for personnel rendering weekend services. The committee, after a thorough review and evaluation, find it's, finds it in order, meritorious and beneficial, considering that even on Saturdays and Sundays, there must have at least one social worker manning the office together with some staff to deliver government social welfare programs to, uh, individuals, families, and communities in need under LGU Epeel. The committee hereby recommends that said draft ordinance be calendared in the next Sangguniang Bayan session for second reading, Madam Chair. Uh, motion for the, uh, adoption of this, uh, committee report.
Another member? In a second.
Another committee report from the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances, Committee Report number zero-four-one, subject an ordinance in joining all business establishments and local transportation in Epeel, Sambuanga Cibugay, to adopt QRPH digital payments in line with the Paling QRPH plus program. Remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, an ordinance, in proposed ordinance, in joining all business establishments and local transportation in Epeel, Sambuanga Cibugay, to adopt QRPH digital payments in line with the Paling QRPH plus program. This draft ordinance was referred to the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances as one of the unfinished businesses during the previous council of the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel. The new committee members to which this proposal was referred discovered that the principal authors of this proposed ordinance were all members of the previous council and no longer members of the current thirtieth council of the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel. Considering that this proposal underwent the first reading already when the previous council ended, June thirty of twenty twenty-five, the new members of the Committee on Rules in the new council recommends dur- recommended during the second regular session of the thirtieth Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel to change the names of the principal authors under the twelfth council to the members of the new thirtieth council. The recommendation has been accomplished, and therefore, new names of the authors and the co-authors of the proposed ordinance has been changed as recommended. The committee therefore recommends that this proposed ordinance be calendared for second reading in the next regular session, Madam Chair. Uh, motion for the adoption of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Seconded by Honorable Tang Karan.
Uh, another new member.
Another new member.
Okay.
I think the committee is complete.
Uh-oh. Finally, Madam Chair, uh, committee report number zero-four-two from the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances. Subject matter here is the barangay revenue code of barangay Buluan, Epeel, Sambuanga Cibugay, for twenty twenty-five. I think this was submitted to the Sangguniang Bayan a week ago, and immediately, uh, the committee, uh, uh, discussed the content of this, uh, barangay revenue code of barangay Buluan. Our remarks and recommendations, Madam Chair, the Committee on Rules, pasin sa nataas-tas ni, daghan mutat findings. Uh, Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances to which the matter was referred, the barangay revenue code of barangay Buluan in the municipality of Epeel submits this report purposely to ensure that said legislation passed by the barangay are within the powers to discharge under the Local Government Code and other existing laws of the Philippines. The committee, during our committee hearing, uh, after a thorough review on discussions, the committee has the following observations. Number one, in letter V, number three of section three B dot zero-one, under barangay clearance and certification of fees, the clearance to conduct prayer rally with a fee of two hundred pesos. This particular item in this co- contract, Madam Chair, with what is stipulated in the succeeding item found in three M point of that zero-three, on exemptions, which states programs or at is conducted by educational, charitable, religious, and government institutions conducted free for the public shall be exempt from the payment of the permit fee herein imposed, quote unquote. If the barangay intends to impose faithfully what is in the exemption section of this code, then the barangay is advised to just delete letter V under section three B dot zero-one of bar- clearance and certification of fees. After all, Madam Chair, prayer rallies in the Philippines are conducted for free by different religious sectors and organizations. So free, gud sa dapat. Naaman sila fee is good. Number two, uh, on, on item three G, A of article three G, the sand and gravel and other quarry revenues, which states that, quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person to get quarry anywhere in the barangay without permit. Violators will be penalized with two thousand pesos for the first offense, three thousand pesos for the second offense, and five thousand pesos for the third offense." Republic Act seventy-one sixty, or the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, Madam Chair, clearly states that barangays are authorized to generate revenue through various means, including fees and charges for services the barangay provides. This includes the power to impose fees for the operation of cockpits, as well as for commercial breeding of game cocks and cockfights. However, the fees must be reasonable and not exceed the cost of service being provided. Section three-nine-one A fourteen, again of the Local Government Code of ninety-one, states that the Sangguniang barangay shall prescribe fines in amount not exceeding one thousand pesos for violation of barangay ordinance. So therefore, kani ilahang di propose, medyo taas ragid siya. So in article B, D of article three N, on offenses against public order, any person violating the curfew hours of barangay buluan. Madam Chair, it is hereby recommended that the corresponding amount for third and final offense pegged at one thousand five hundred pesos shall be lowered to just one thousand, as per section three-nine-one A fourteen of RA seventy-one sixty, or the Local Government Code, that it shall only prescribe fines in amount not exceeding one thousand pesos for violation of barangay ordinances. Next, under section thirty dot zero-one, in the imposition of fees for adult violators of illegal gambling, under third offense, a fine of one thousand and imprisonment for one year. Madam Chair, the barangay cannot impose imprisonment as a penalty for violating its ordinances. RA seventy-one sixty states that a barangay can impose fines not exceeding one thousand for violations of its ordinances. The penalty of imprisonment is reserved for courts to decide, not the barangay itself. There is no law that grants a barangay the authority to impose imprisonment as a penalty for violating any ordinance. The committee recommends that the imprisonment clause in this particular item of the revenue code of barangay buluan will be deleted also. Number four, and I think this is the last, under section thirty dot zero-one, in the imposition of fees, first offense for minor offenders on the fight against illegal gambling in barangay buluan, which is to impose hard labor within the barangay as penalty. Madam Chair, the barangay must take note that such an imposition of hard labor in the barangay will fall under the jurisdiction of the courts, again, not for, uh, not of the barangay, Madam Chair. The courts are the ones responsible for imposing penalties based on the law and established legal procedures. While the barangays have the authority to handle disputes through the katarungang pambarangay system, and their power is limited to mediation and conciliation, but cannot impose penalties like hard labor, especially to minors. Furthermore, in the Philippines, the term minor offender typically refers to a child in conflict with the law, speak specifically someone under the age of eighteen. Republic Act ninety-three forty-four, also known as Juvenile Justice and Welfare Act, which prioritizes prioritizes rehabilitation and child appropriate proceedings over punishment. Instead of criminal prosecution, minor offenders may be subjected to intervention programs aimed at the rehabilitation and reintegration into the society. It is hereby recommended that for each offense a minor may commit, it shall be the parents or the ga- guardians who will be penalized considering their civil liability over their minor, uh, children. Based on the findings of this review, the Committee on Rules, Resolutions, and Ordinances therefore recommends to the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel that the revenue code of barangay buluan be remanded back, of course, to the requesting party, and take notice of all the committee's recommendations for proper action before it will be submitted again to the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel for final review and approval. Motion for the, uh, acceptance of this report, Madam Chair.
Second. In a second.
Thank you, Madam.
Seconded by Honorable Tang Karan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
Any more committee report? Yes.
I have a committee report, Madam Chair. But, uh, this report is, uh, under the chairmanship of Ayan Sabion. In behalf of the, uh, Chairman Committee on Transportation, the Honorable Lin Ayan Sabion, who manifested last decision to resign as chairman, I will be rendering now the committee report as ag- as I agreed and accepted the committee chairmanship. I hope, uh, you will agree with me. I have the following committee reports, one-way traffic, one-way traffic scheme that is paid area due to the ongoing building construction, Madam Chair. The committee report number forty-six, subject the question to temporarily declare the barangay road, particular particularly Magsay say street on barangay population to implement a one-way traffic scheme due to the construction of a two-story building to avoid vehicles congestion during the arrival in dismissal of learners in April speed. Findings, uh, Magsay say street serves as a major access road for parents in school service. Magsayasa Street serves as a major access road for parents in school service, vehicles delivering and coaching students from Ipeel Speed School with kids, learners with special needs. The construction activity scheduled from August 5, 2025 to January 4, 2026 has temporarily narrowed the usable road space, creating bottlenecks in unsafe traffic condition. Traffic volumes sharply increased during weekdays, particularly between 6:30 AM to 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM coinciding with the school arrival and dismissal times. The Municipality of Ipeel Traffic Safety Operation and Management, the MSOM, has recommended implementing temporary one-way traffic scheme to ensure the smooth flow of vehicles and enhance pedestrian safety during the identified period. Uh, the MSOM has the support of the barangay council of population. The Ipeel PNP Traffic Division and stakeholders from the school and nearby business. Recommendations, in light of the foregoing, the committee respectfully recommends that an ordinance be drafted in passing temporarily declaring Magsayasa Street from Mirro Heniro Sosokgang Avenue to Ferrari Street, barangay population, as one-way traffic during the period of August 5, 2025 to January 4, 2026 only on weekdays and strictly during the hours of 6:30 AM to 8:00 AM, then 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. That the Municipality of Ipeel Traffic Safety Operation and Management in coordination with the barangay council in Ipeel, uh, barangay council in Ipeel PNP be authorized to install proper signage, deploy traffic enforcers, and implement scheme immediately. Committee action, the Committee on Transportation and Public Safety unanimously agrees to recommend the drafting and immediate passage of an ordinance to effect the temporary one-way traffic regulation as a matter of public in safety at order. I move to adopt this, uh, I move for the approval of this committee report, Madam Chair.
Hi, second, Madam Chair.
Seconded. Any discussion? It's an ordinance. Nakakalindar. Refer sa. Move for the one.
Oh, it move, urgency.
Urgency.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of this, uh, I will refer the ordinance for the approval and I request the committee of the whole.
Move for the urgency and then, uh, refer to the committee of the whole. Move for the urgency first.
Uh, your motion should be, uh, motion considering this proposed ordinance as urgent.
Yes. Okay. Uh, an ordinance declaring a one-way traffic scheme.
Uh, move sa for urgency.
Oh, you use the term urgent.
Miss, Madam Chair, may I, uh, ask for a recess?
Okay. Recess muna.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Okay na, back to order na tayo.
Madam Chair, have an ordinance declaring one-way traffic scheme along Magsay Say Street from Mirory Heniroso Avenue to the Ferrari Street being implemented during the period of August 5 to January 4, 2025 only with this ensured during the hours of 6:30 a.m. to 8 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. to 5 p.m. We are special education speed being a recipient of the school building is now constructing a building in the area whereas during the construction entails a longer period estimated to be completed within six months. Whereas to minimize the disruption of traffic flow and ensure the safety of the school's children, motorists and pedestrians during the formation time there is a need to implement a one-way traffic scheme to this effect. Now therefore be it ordained by the Sangkuyang Bayan decision. Now therefore, this purpose, the purpose of the one-way traffic scheme is held by declared along Magsay Say Street from Mirory Heniroso Sokgang Avenue to the Ferrari Street barangay population during the period of August 5. I move, I, ah.
If. They can, if they can ask anyone.
I move that this, I move. You know, that this. Be converted to committee of the whole and take out and we do the shared referral from the committee of rules and resolution.
I second Madam Chair.
It's been seconded. Any discussion, objection, or having a motion is served by approve.
Motion for the approval of these proposed ordinance for seeking in final reading, Madam Chair.
Second, any second.
I second Madam Chair.
It's been seconded.
Actually Madam Chair, there was a motion after the declaration of this proposed ordinance as urgent, there was a succeeding motion for the conversion into the committee of the whole. So I think we need to be in the committee of the whole first Madam Chair. Okay, so we are now in the committee of the whole as declared by the presiding officer. So discussion?
Any discussion, objection, or having a motion is served by approve.
Okay, so your motion for final and third reading?
Motion for the approval of this, uh, motion for the approval of this ordinance for the third.
And final.
And final reading.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Second again Madam Chair.
Seconded. Anybody discussion, discussion, objection, or having a motion is served by approve. Back to regular session. And unfinished business, business for today. Other matters, other matters to.
Yeah, other matters Madam Chair. As part of, yes, as part of our legislative agenda Madam Chair, that of course we have already approved our resolution conducting our legislative agenda sometime in August 20 to 22nd, 2025 in San Buanga del Norte. Madam Chair, I think it's part of this legislative agenda Madam Chair. The LGUs must intensify its fight against criminality, illegal drugs, and violent extremism. We are already in the modern times Madam Chair where young people are somewhat very aggressive. So we need to also meet with the civil society organization to be part of this Madam Chair. So I, I move that there shall be a meeting with the different civil society organizations with the Sangkuyang Bayan so that the result of that meeting Madam Chair will be incorporated in our legislative assembly. So therefore no need to, to bring this CSO with us during our LA in Bambami Resort Madam Chair. So that's my motion, calling for the meeting of the civil society organization Madam Chair.
When?
Uh, well, within this week.
Friday, Friday.
Friday.
Friday at nine o'clock.
Uh, Friday afternoon if it's possible.
Morning lang.
Morning?
Yeah, nine.
Ah, sige, Friday, nine AM.
Okay, mag nine, Friday.
Excuse me, okay, nope, meeting, sir.
Okay, okay, so okay lang, mas kin, isa pa.
Okay lang, basta majority of the members will be here.
So Friday is fine at nine o'clock in the morning?
Nine o'clock.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay, sige.
So, any second to that motion, yes, okay.
Seconded by the vice chairman. Okay, another resolution, katung, resolution sa hospital. A resolution to ipa-stop ang inter-ang interest?
Ay, oo, yes, oo. Madam Chair, this has in relation to our visitor this morning Madam Chair in the person of Genebil Kunahap. I can feel the sentiment of Kunahap family and first of all, I would like to extend my deepest condolences. We sag late na, no, we sympathize the Kunahap family of Makilas, Epeel. And they are now facing this, you know, the continuation of the problem that the family had met sometime in 2024 wherein because of that hospitalization of their father, the family incurred 2 million pesos in total hospital bills and out of the 2.2, no, Genebil, they were able to settle some portion of the 2.2 and at this point in time Madam Chair, they have an existing account with the West Metro Hospital manage, West Metro Hospital in San Buanga City amounting to 1,700,000 plus the consideration that on a monthly basis they are being imposed, the, the hospital is imposing interest. So with the latest computation from 1.7, kung imong computon on the interest, it has gone up again to about how much Miss Genebel? 2.2 million again Madam Chair as of February. So for sure it has gone up at this point in time beyond the 2.2 million already. Therefore Madam Chair, with that situation that the Kunahap family is facing, I'd like to propose a resolution, a resolution humbly requesting with prayer to the West Metro Hospital management of San Buanga City to halt the imposition of monthly interest related to the hospital accountability of Miss Genebel Kunahap. At any rate, thank you Madam Chair.
Any motion for the adjournment?
Before, before the adjournment Madam Chair. Thank you Madam Chair. I happened to talk with some of the local finance committee last Monday Madam Chair. And in our short dialogue, I learned Madam Chair that the local government unit has also an area in. Dito sa Tabusba, no?
Malabagbato.
Malabagbato? Malabagbato sa nito? Madam Chair, and I also understand that we have an increasing number of informal settlers not only in Balabagbato but even the adjacent lot of our public market in which based on the deed of conditional donation which was signed into and between the local government unit and the RBSF that we are, um, requested to prevent that area from the occupancy of informal settlers. Here we find out that na ay massive increase of informal settlers, if I am not mistaken, morgisaka na up to 1,200 to 300 household, household. So in fact, siguro maskin ka ng ato ang iljor, um, rich subdivision, barangay Epeel Heights, the same troop, kemur daghan, kaayro ng mas quarters. And I believe that this happened because merugulay nagtutok na office na tuani sa local government unit. So in this connection Madam Chair, may I, may this presentation request the presence of the MPDC, the engineering and the ASSOR next regular session in ABD edition. May I move for a resolution for your such indication?
Madam Chair, may I be pronounced? Other matters, no? Madam Chair, ini ako request lang sa mga chairmans ng mga committee, no? Kung hindi, o, umiira sila ha? May namin gumiya sila mga report, no guys? Siya po mga lumabingtet karol, tagas na kayo reporting, yung mga tumukobas, mga otawa. Kaya para pag-abot sa inyo ha? Ba, may mga ramangkal, ini gumiya subjektor, di ba? Para't kaniwag ka, kapasakan na bisita ng report, na namin mga ideya. Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, basta mga chairmans, mga different committees.
Pwede, pwede, pwede.
Yeah, and also, yeah, and also di ba, Honorable Alcoriza, we discussed ready, yes, I mean yesterday, kung na ay committee report na iha nag sa inyo karol, na irefer sa inyo ha? Making sure that na following week na agitay committee report unless na ay public hearing. Para dito matugay, para paspasang ato ang pag kuwan ba?
And another, and another thing Madam Chair, as a, also a further reminders that we will attend the caucus before the start of this session para kita ma, ma discuss na. Na na kay initial discussion, hindi natmatugay.
Unai tangan.
Yes.
So, kaya ato mga, mga isurya nga namon ni Honorable Alcoriza, kaya na inagit aniya, how many months na ang committee report, di ba Honorable Alcoriza?
Yes, actually.
Wala kay committee report, and we're only given 15 days, ato ang, di ba, nandun ay 15 days?
30 days.
Yeah, okay, 30 days, but mas mahal si siguro kaya na atay one week to prepare for the committee report for the following week. So mas mahal siguro, action na tayo na ato committee report, butang ringon unless there's a public hearing.
That was what happened Madam Chair to a few of our barangays who submitted their barangay revenue report in February and March of 2025 and it was referred to our committee in June of 2025. So practically, ito, all of them were deep approved already. Uny, o, even rebihor, nila ang mga, daghab, uh, pointing mga violations, so nasaka manatuna. So, but of course we're not putting the blame to the previous members of this council. What is important now is we can move forward. We have agreed with our presiding officer that every referral that we have in our committee, the most is two sessions, imo na din ang buhatan ng report on the second week. Dapat atay action kaya para mas mas.
Yes, Honorable.
May na refer sa kuwan committee, ato reto problema sa Tarpani, sa Tampars, katunggalan. So, problema, Mr. Madam Chair, wala pa yun ako, siya na pagkawat, kaya nagpaabot ko, itransmit sa kuwa ang feedback report ni Consyent Palalon. So, antir na, wala pa man ko siya sa kuwan submit kaya sila manggulang sa side inspection dito. So, wala pa yun, nakukuha, so paun san ako na karoon magkuwan, wala man ko dinsensib, Consyent Palalon sa kuwan.
Okay, we just remind, uh, Consyent Palalon na na siguro na makakata.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, ako suggestion is first remind the concerned person. If after reminding, wala kiha po, you make a committee report, that, yes, you make a committee report, we have made, uh, we have requested as part of the requirement for this report. Wala man, so ako di buhatan ng report, I cannot move forward, po lack of requirements.
And also, ang kwan po, ang mga staff na to dapat muri mainkusay lahat ng mga pangga. Oh, na kay committee report, ay kalimot.
So, correct.
Ano lang? Ano lang siguro.
Okay.
Okay, so move forward nun, yes, second po na nun.
I second Madam Chair.
Okay, session is hereby adjourned.
Thank you, God bless everyone.